Speak.
Yeah.
Oh, anyone here speak? Oh, okay. See no hands. Uh, we'll move on to committee response. Any response to that? No. Okay, moving on. Item three, approve minutes. Todd, you approve?
Yes.
I approve too. Minutes are approved. Facilities discussion, we have construction update. Travis.
Sure.
Are you ready for your presentation?
Yeah, sure.
Travis, you can just introduce yourself and work us the presentation, please.
Certainly. Should I, should I use the?
Yeah. All right, one second.
Do you have, wait, do you have, you have the uh, presentation?
I do.
Oh.
Trying to get the source to. Now. That was supposed to. Oh, it couldn't.
Oh, great.
Now we're. Fine.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, um. So I'm Travis Randall, I'm the construction project manager for campus uh, construction project management group. We're overseeing uh, all the capital improvement projects under the uh, current twenty nineteen referendum. So uh, today's uh, presentation slides, I've included a lot of photos. Uh, so see what's going on in the active construction project, which is, which is uh, phase three B one.
Working or not working?
Uh, work.
You clicked off the side show there.
Yep. There, I guess, I guess you're quicker than I was.
Questions?
Oh, there you go.
Well, it's not on, so that's probably. Okay. Thanks, Chris. Alright, uh. So uh, this, this first slide is out at uh, at the high school. This is uh, the STEM addition, uh, the physics addition roof at the STEM area. As you see, uh, the the roof is on, as is the mechanical equipment uh, is installed on the, the new roof section. This is the roof section that connects uh, the, this area E STEM, and this actually connects to area C uh, near the kind of pool wrestling room area. This will be a corridor through there connecting the two buildings, so it's gonna be another, another uh pathway and opportunity for uh uh, cross traffic between buildings as well. This next uh, photo is of the high school auto shop and open STEM. This is again from the roof. This is from the, taken from the existing area E roof, taken at the new addition there. You can see it's much taller. Uh, the high roof, you can't quite see in the photo, that high roof uh, membrane is also installed and currently the uh, work in progress uh, is occurring on uh, the CMU, that's construction masonry unit. Also, the cinder block, the block wall assembly is ongoing, you can see in this photo. This addition uh, abuts directly to the, to the kind of old STEM wing, so you can see that work occur in there. This next photo is directly inside from the last photo uh, that we had. This is inside the auto shop and open STEM uh, addition. You can see there's work in progress, again, the block walls, also mechanical piping, you can see in the photos, and the ductwork is getting installed in that addition. It's gonna be a, a large, a large space.
This is a space that was designed for Code Red Robotics to be able to practice that program and be flexible for, for other uses instead as well. Yeah. Thanks, Chris.
So this next photo is actually inside the physics room addition, so this is uh, underneath uh, that first, the roof of the first photo I took. This is the addition that again connects area E to area C. Um. A lot going on in there. The CMU walls, uh, the, the block walls are complete. Uh, we still have to do uh, vapor barrier brick on those. Obviously, windows need to get installed. You can see in this photo, the work in progress on the mechanical piping. Also, there's electrical uh, conduits and ceiling.
So for the high school students in the room, you can get from the cafeteria to the gym without going like way around after this is done.
Yeah. So, next photo, so this is uh, this corridor is corridor E twenty seven, also in the STEM addition. This is open for use right now, as it's still a work in progress. Uh, you can see ceilings are partially in, lighting is installed uh, in this photo, not personally installed. Also, the ceramic wall tile on the walls installed, one side of the wall. So, ongoing work in there. This is directly adjacent to the the kind of old, the, the pre-existing STEM, the area that we're renovating. So the next slide moves to uh, Enfield Elementary School. So this slide is showing the exterior facade work that's ongoing. Uh, you can see in the photo, there's a new uh, entry sidewalk with an ADA ramp and uh, and marker there from the bus loop. Uh, new windows are installed uh, above the low roof section into the cafeteria there. Got rid of the, the old uh, kind of glazed tile block there. Uh, get much better lighting in the cafeteria, better sight lines. Uh. Also, you can see that they're preparing for the wall panel system. You can see that there's some Z, what we call Z channel uh, attached to the walls there. They've also been prepped with vapor barrier on the existing uh, on the existing wall surface, the uh, the previous kind of stucco uh, material has been moved from that. Uh, this, the structural stock, steel columns, excuse me, are still a work in progress there ongoing, um. Yeah, so that's, that's that photo there. And the other update that I wanted to provide uh, is for the upcoming phase three B two. At last meeting, we had uh tentative uh, bid date set for October. Uh, we bumped that to November fifth. Uh, we've re, we're receiving uh, really excellent uh, bid three bid participation. We're expecting really good bids to come in, so there's been a lot of questions and we, we bumped the date uh, uh, about a week or so. About two weeks. Yeah, uh, to allow, to allow all the contractors that are wanting to bid to uh, to work on their bids and get them in.
We, we had a, we were on a very good timeframe and bumping this still allows us to be bidding, you know, late fall, early winter for summer construction, which is still a very good timeframe.
Yeah. Yep, uh, so bid opening set, date set for that November fifth. Um, we're, we'll get letters of recommendation to the board and expecting that we can have the board vote at the November twentieth uh, board voting meeting. So, and uh, like Chris said, that sets us up well uh, for this uh, construction that's scheduled to begin in twenty twenty six. So that's what I had is, are there any questions about the active construction? Or not?
Questions? Thank yous for the photos.
Yeah.
Really liked seeing the photos.
Yeah.
What else? Thank you.
Sure, yeah. Look, we have lots of photos, so most of them, most of them somewhat uninteresting, but yeah.
Well, a lot of the technical things are over my head, photos I can understand, so thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so next up is capital particle date.
Yeah. Yes. While, while Jen's bringing that up, that just saying to her moments ago, um, I'll just uh, tag on sort of four point two. Travis started out with the bidding process for what we're calling phase three B point two. What that includes is the second half of mechanical work at Ithaca High School, the first half of which is, you know, we were just talking about, um. It includes also some work at BJM to improve some ceiling and lighting in the cafeteria. The same scope of work at Fall Creek Elementary School, as well as asbestos containing floor tile abatement and the hallways, get, you know, some of that out of there um, as well as the playground at Fall Creek. So that's sort of what all is in that scope of work that we're about to bid. Um, it also includes out there, I'm not turned around, that um, that whole parking lot area, you know, reconfiguration and replacement of that asphalt as well. As we get into four point three, I'll start setting the, the scene. Here we go. Okay, so we're gonna talk about a, um, at OACM meetings, which is owner architect destruction manager meetings that occur on a monthly basis where we um, we talk about where we are with projects and, and what may be coming up. We have identified that there in the twenty nineteen bond, okay, so that, that hundred and twenty million that was approved in twenty nineteen by the voters. We've been working through that capacity over all these last products. As we are encumbering that money through bids, um, we're keeping an eye on that. And so Campus, Travis have been, you know, keeping an eye on, okay, what, what have we allocated, what do we not have allocated yet? We go into capital projects trying to be conservative and make sure that we have budgets to cover contingencies to, for things that are discovered under construction, for example. Right? We want to be sure we're in a good position. The more certainty we get, the more comfortable we feel saying, alright, we were holding on to a bunch of money, just to be sure we're good. Uh, we have a confidence level now that we can sort of release some of that money to spend on something else, right? Um. So we want to talk about today, a project that we are recommending could be done with some of that, what we're calling unallocated money. Um. As we move forward and open bids on the project we were just talking about, three B point two, um, in a couple of weeks' time, we will have more certainty. You know, hopefully, we're, we're hopeful that those bids will come in well, um. And we'll revisit this, uh, but this presentation is to propose a scope of work that has um risen in importance recently. We're gonna talk about Ithaca High School locker rooms. Uh, has anyone been, been in those locker rooms recently?
Students. There's some people behind this.
Um, so if you've been in those, if you've been in those locker rooms, um, hopefully you'll understand that um, they've been, you know, looked at for some time. A lot of the construction is original to the building, which is nineteen sixty.
Saying it's old for travel.
Um, yes, I'll, I would, I'll say that, uh, yeah, so sixty five years um, at this point. So, there have been some upgrades over time, but um, when you look at some of the pictures, that, that may not be surprising that, that some of this is, are still original construction. It's been doing a great job for sixty five years. Um, what we're proposing partially um, was, was um, elevated in its in its need um, because of a recent observation um, this spring. I'll get into that in a minute, um, but this um, project budget is based on the construction dollars that Travis has recommended, that, you know, there's some comfort level that we can, we can tap into this money and then using incidentals and, and sort of creating a full project out of them. So it's about two and a half million dollars all in. We will refine this as we move forward, but to get a rough order of magnitude for a project that we think, you know, can do. This, um, includes the shower rooms, some upgrades to the bathrooms while we're at it, um, as well as the bleachers and bliss gym that we have had several conversations about over recent months. Um, I don't know, Jen, if you could answer one slide for me, please.
Maybe it was my.
Let's go back to this one. So this shows a floor plan. I'll just, um, also remind folks of the context, this um, you'll see some green areas. The green area on the left, um, the, the green areas surround the pool and then auditorium uh, that the pool sits within. There's sort of a U-shaped area around the the two sides and the top of that pool that include many locker rooms and shower rooms and bathrooms. That whole square footage, it's about ten thousand square feet, was included in the previous proposed capital project referendum for, so it was previously discussed as something that uh, was a need. We are focusing in on just some pieces of that uh, in this project that we, we think are the most critical. So it's just a, you know, a little more explanation of what areas we're assuming. So this is basically the um, in the boys' room, the shower rooms, um, and the gold areas of the bathroom, that's part of the greater locker room zone. The same spaces, um, the girls' locker room, and then the top, there's sort of an L-shaped green area, which is another entrance to your pool that requires for health code shower uh, before we enter that pool space. That is where a lot of community members and staff um, would typically enter, since the district provides that amenity to you know, to your employees. Those are three areas. Let's go, I'll try to go to the next one, okay? What we have observed, um, is yeah, I mean, you can see obvious degradation of tile and cracks that have formed over the years. It's done quite a, quite a long life of service for many generations of students, um. And you can see the, the condition that they're in at the moment. There are some drainage issues as well from some of the showers that are limiting the use of the showers right now. So that is, um, this is um, a part of this is a plumbing project, basically, just to sort of correct some really basic plumbing needs. Um, and while we're at it, we can upgrade these spaces. What may be hard to see in some of these, that the paint's coming off the ceiling, the shower stalls are, um, have been serving for quite a long time, can be upgraded. There are some group shower stalls that are um, honestly just being used for storage, um. So there could be a better use of space. Here's an example, that in the middle. On the left, um, is a picture that, um, was after a, um, uh, a heavy rain, and we observed on the floor after it drained out what appeared to be toilet paper. Alright, uh, so as we were wondering, why, why would we be seeing this? We thought that, um, okay, it's been, there's been some heavy rains. This was in the, in the late spring. Heavy rains. Um, why would there be potentially sewage coming up out of the floor drains of the shower stalls? We looked at the original floor plans, which we have some, some good records of the plumbing lines there. We also observed that there was what originally was labeled a towel closet that has been turned into a bathroom at some point in time, we're not sure when. Longer than a few years ago. Um, that we suspect when that was built, that the uh, the sanitary waste line was tied into the line, basically, that is what the shower drains are are plugged into, which is not where it should be connected. It should be connected to the sanitary sewer line, which is another probably nearby pipe, because there is a bathroom immediately on the other side. So whoever built it probably thought they were connecting into the correct thing, but we suspect weren't. And so a combination of that cross piping, if you will, and a potential block further down the line and a heavy rain results in what we think is a backup that uh, should be solved.
Yeah, I think, and Chris, great to know, as of right now, we don't know what was actually causing that and what was correct. We need to do some serious exploring, because there's, could be a number of factors that are causing it, but
Yeah.
that's part of like what we're trying to figure out is, is there's clearly a drainage issue, we need to figure out what it is. And, and I, I want to actually circle back. Um, you mentioned the girl, that there's access to plumbing in the basement. Is it different for the boys? Like, is the plumbing like in Brown? So we all
Yes.
can access it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And most of the girls' plumbing, the plumbing for the the girls' shower and toilet rooms is actually slab upgrade. There's a, a spot where it comes out into the pool mechanical room.
Okay.
So which is, that center bottom picture is down in that room.
So if, if, part of this cost would be ripping off the entire slab?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I would also add to Todd's point, we don't know. We haven't we haven't identified the issue. We have put a, a camera down, but we haven't been able to identify the cause, because we can't see uh, with the camera. We are, our, some of our next steps are calling brain drain or some others to put a scope down to get to the exact root cause of this. Right now, we have our hypotheses.
Um, ju- just out of curiosity, if there weren't drainage issues, would you be calling to like repair all of the the plumbing? Or you?
If there weren't drainage issues, no, we wouldn't replace plumbing if it seems to be working fine, but yeah. The, well, the, um, and in the girls' bathroom, we're also, and we shared the boys', but the girls were also having different drainage issues
Yeah.
as well. Um, also, um, the showers are completely outdated and don't provide any privacy for anybody who's eleven. So we'd like to, um, I know they're circa nineteen sixty four. We would like to come uh, into the modern era, and we'd like to create um, individual uh, partitioned
Yeah.
uh, showers that provide adequate privacy for our students and for possibly community members who use these spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, those reasons were why it was considered in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now we've got some plumbing stuff.
Yeah. Um. I- i- is it possible, like, if we were able to find out that everything in the slab is okay? Like, I don't know, like, if you guys have scoped it, like, if, if you can see the i- is it cast iron? Is it rusted out? Like, is there a way to tell, like, what the actual life is of what's in the slab upgrade?
Yeah, there was an attempt to do that with a, a in-house staff, with a scope that was twenty five feet long, and it was full of uh, liquid that you couldn't see through.
Yeah.
Not clear.
Yeah. I- because for me, I'm thinking like the, a huge part of the cost is ripping up that slab. Redoing that, I mean, that like i- i- if there was a way to somehow save the drainage pipes and like all your main lines that are coming in, could we then reconfigure like the water lines, you know, and build whatever stalls we can build based off, you know, what's coming into the space already? I don't know if there's a more efficient way to do it, rather than just like ripping everything out and starting fresh. So I'm just asking as a question, so I don't know.
So as a matter of course, we would, in a redesign,
Yeah.
look at, okay, where's the plumbing now? Let's put, let's put the shower stalls where the plumbing already is. To, to that point.
Yeah.
Um. As one of the considerations for an efficient and cost-effective design.
I said it.
Oh, some of the, there in the, in the girls' locker room, we, we have some issues with the piping already.
Yeah.
So we couldn't reuse some of the existing, we could not do what you're suggesting, certainly in the girls' locker room.
Okay.
Is that, that piping, there are some impediments in, in the piping that we, we, that uh, we've been notified about. Go ahead, Ted.
So are those all the showers in the locker room? And also, other question is just how, what's, what's the culture like? Do, do people take showers in the shower? Is, is it that they're so gross at this point and not private that nobody dares to use the showers?
That's correct.
Made them better, people might use the showers, or is it the case like, I just remember from the nineties in my high school days, that just, nobody would ever take a shower in school, no matter what?
I think we're at that second part. I don't think anyone's really using them. I, there's some minimal, we can see there's some um, drainage in the, in the girls' locker room especially, so there's, there's some very minimal use, um, but um, not really being used um, to this point.
And, and Admiral, you asked next, it's like, should we spend two million dollars on something that no one's ever gonna use anyway?
Right, like, will, like, is it, right, are they not using it because it's decrepit, or are they not using it because kids really don't want to take showers in school and
I just, I guess I'll, I'll ask a question, which is, do you want to provide an opportunity for students to shower at your high school?
Well, I would say yes, if they'll, it will be used. Like, in other words, if I could, if I interviewed the student body and students said like, even if the showers are absolutely drop dead gorgeous, you know, beautiful hotel-like showers, there's no way I'm taking a shower at school, then I would say no, but if, if they say, well, I'm not showering at school because they're disgusting, and if they were nice, I would.
I'll add that some of these are required by the Department of Health to be present and to be functional.
Yeah.
So the, at least going into the pool at those three locations.
And if that's the case, do we just provide like what's, what's required and save, you know, a million dollars or something?
Right.
We all sign our athletic director, your.
Yes, let's, we might, we might, yeah.
You might wanna chime in. I don't know. Well.
Thanks. Hi, good evening. My name's Carrie Burke. I'm the uh, Director of Athletics and Wellness for the District. Um, with respect to the question of usage, they're not being used in large part because of the state that they're in. Um. I would share that our aims are certainly inclusive of students, but also community members. We're in conversation now about, for example, opening up the pool on Sundays for staff and their families. And that space that is used for showering before you enter the pool is not functional, it's not ADA compliant. And I was a caregiver bringing my child into that space, I think I would be concerned. But I think these spaces, and I'm gonna reference my colleague Shane Taylor, who I was discussing this with today. We're talking about spaces where people are at their most vulnerable, and they want two things. They want privacy and they want safety. And right now, being in those spaces, you get neither of those things.
So I, I don't know if that really answered my question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, or Adam's question, which was, I, I would like to have answered too, is, I agree, if we aren't being provided, we want it to be safe and inclusive. But do we actually need to provide this? And if we do need to provide it, we need to provide as many, do we need to really do full renovations? Because again, like, we can save a million dollars, I mean, we're, we're.
We, we do need to provide it uh, per code, health code. We do need to provide access and students are supposed to um, shower before and I believe afterwards. We're actually not talking about a lot of showers also, because um, these, uh, I don't know if we've been able to, maybe we can go, go back to the map for a second, but um, we won't actually be able, um, these aren't really excessively large shower rooms.
Yeah.
And in these rooms, we'll be able to provide, um, you know, I don't know if we can have an estimate for that, but I would imagine four to six, maybe.
Yeah, probably, probably eight.
Small.
And then you could, um, there is a multi-user open shower room in each boys' and girls' that could be used uh, in a, in a couple of different ways, more efficient, like actually make it a storage room. Or another team room. Uh, there's, you know, other ideas as well.
Yeah, and, and again, storage. Yeah, a- and again, storage room or team room, we don't need touch plumbing, we don't need touch the slab.
Correct.
To me, that slab is gonna be really expensive, and that, that, that's what concerns me, if there's again, a way to be creative around it, I, I don't know what that is. I haven't been in the space, I can't really speak intelligently, I just know from a cost perspective, it's gonna cost a lot of money, so.
We, we'd certainly be happy to shape this space.
Yeah, I, I don't know, like, if you have any.
Well, I, I was just gonna add, if, if there is a tie-in between storm drains from the roof. And plumbing, a- as we suspect. Uh and that's, whether that's over a, a mechanical space that's in the basement or a slab. That should be corrected, regardless of what you, so even if you don't use that shower. If you like cut and cap that and it's still tied in. It's gonna back up the next closest place.
Yeah.
It's, as long as that connection is there. During periods of heavy rain, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna find the next closest, and the next closest spot may be even less.
Yeah.
Like.
Right, potential stormwater, it is a totally separation.
Yeah, okay.
Then redoing the bathrooms, and it's clear, I, I don't know, plus it's clear, I highly doubt that it's underneath the slab in the bathroom, if it is somehow tied in. So I get, I guess, again, like, for me, it's probably like an exterior issue, doesn't matter, I, I'm just thinking of like. When I hear a couple million dollars to do six showers, that. It's concerning, and again, like, I wanna understand, like, is this something that we're using, if we're gonna, if it is something that's used, how to do all this efficiently possible? Um. Because, a- and Craig, we're looking at like twenty-five hundred square feet of renovations, is that what it was?
Yeah, approximately.
And what's the budget for it?
The construction budget is around four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. That's what the market bears, so then, so it's one, put contingencies on top of that escalation. Um fees, that's how you, that's how you get to a complete project.
Yes.
Just my bottom.
I, 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 I just, just the cost of square foot.
It's, we, yeah, we don't make that up.
I know, I know, I know, I know, it's just, it's my bottom.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be more than six showers, it's six showers in both.
It would probably be eight showers, we're probably talking about sixteen showers, reclaiming space that is inefficient and not well-used. To actually be able to do things for your athletics program that it's not doing right now, so there's value other than just creating showers. Sorry, I'm in the wrong business.
I mean, I think it's like ten thousand dollars a shower for us, but I know it's, I know it's unsaid.
This includes also uh the total product size.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's like two, ten thousand dollar per, you know. Per bathroom for us in the residential building.
And very different type of construction.
No, I don't.
Different conditions.
Are there any other showers in high school besides this?
There is a shower in the wellness suite. Um. That might be the only other one. If there's any others besides. Yeah.
So I just, I, I mean, I, I obviously should supply showers for our athletic program, but beyond that. Very real, very idea of making this available to teachers and staff members and other community members. And I, I also, I, I don't know the answer to this, but I, I know I do know we have sometimes students with very unstable home situations. And it seemed to me, tell me if I'm wrong, that having a facility where students with difficult housing situations could. I, I don't know if that happens, but it seems to be like it'd be a good resource for us to have, so.
Most definitely, um in, across all of our buildings, it's one of the businesses we have washers and dryers in them, for that very reason for students who don't have. Stable housing or un- unhoused, um this becomes another resource for them.
So I guess for those three reasons, I'd fully encourage my employees. Yeah, I, 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 I think no matter what we have to, because it's cold, and I, I think for those reasons, I think for me, I'm just like, how can we do efficiently?
Uh I would also add that this is really close to our weight room too. And our weight room is under very heavy use, um I'm, I don't know, I'm sure you all are aware of that, even on weekends. Lots of our sports teams are through varsity, JV, modified, um I'm always surprised by how, how much use our weight room. It, you know, that's my son's first question about when he's coming to high school. Um I think that if we did have um adequate showers. That might, that might help in some of our sports and conditioning training as well, and it, it might be. Um another thing, is right now, our, our students just don't wanna use them because of their state and because of privacy issues, if we can. If we can change both those things, um I think it'd be a, a great resource, and it's literally, um. How far away is the weight room on this net?
It is, it is just off the top of the plan, so there's a hallway that you can sort of proceed at the top of the floor plate, it's just on the other side of that wall.
And I would, I would add to that stat too, because we do have early morning hours, we open pool Friday mornings, we're staffing those spaces, but one reason is I think we don't get more staff. Accessing those, it's like, you have to go home, there's no one, I, I've showered in these spaces and. When I first started working here, came early morning workouts and then stopped. Uh.
Sure.
Um uh we would love for you to use that. You are, you, you are gonna print a pass for you, we will. Thank you, we will make sure, no, but I think, I think your question, like, look, this fits in us. Making all of our facilities much more accessible, Carrie and Shane have done an amazing job with supporting opening up the stadium. And we were just talking um to our insurance provider today also about the pool for the community as well.
Okay.
And I think it just fits in with, how can we um be a better resource for our community? For all of our families.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the budget, you mentioned that, that's what the market could bear, so. Is, is this what you think it would actually be, is it four, forty-five a square foot, or that's the max that it could be, and then hopefully it'll be less as we do more exploratory stuff?
That's a blended rate based on our experience on recent bids on other projects, um that combines. You know, if you're doing a heavy bathroom, it's, it's more than that, but we're assuming also that some of those existing, like the open shower rooms would be. Turned into like a storage room, so that would be a less expensive square footage, so we're, we're sort of blending that rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Carrie, when, when the facility might be made available to, to staff, that would be for after use by athletic. So there'd be separate times and separate.
Yeah, they're talking about Saturday mornings, Sunday morning, sorry.
And it is for school?
Before school for staff.
For staff, okay, yeah.
Definitely welcome using weight room after school, it seems sometimes just, it's a little crowded, but.
I mean, I can say, I'm just trying to be, but that's on the perspective of, of a teacher, you may not wanna use.
Right.
If, if it's full teams or something, you know, so I, I think the idea of maybe before school, seems like. Before school starts, that wouldn't be overlap with athletic program.
No, we don't know, we don't, we don't typically have kids in the weight room, that's usually the space that's being used by staff before, before school hours. And really, that goes back to like supervision, right, so getting, that means having staff, remember they're six in the morning, right, and so.
Yeah. Fix those showers and get the word out. Good, good response.
What I'm asking for in this moment is, if you think this is something that should be investigated further. We'll organize Drain Brain, one of our engineers.
Yeah.
And do more investigation to fine tune this scope of work. Um in the meantime, we'll get, we'll have bids open, and we'll get some more certainty about, you know, how much unallocated money we have. Uh we might be able to do more of this.
Yeah, I, I. See, Todd nodding and I'm nodding, like. Seems difficult to endorse the current state of the.
Yeah.
Facility, so bowing, yeah, please.
Thanks.
So you're gonna explore it and then come back with some recommendations?
Yeah. Come back, we'll see him into this, by the time, okay, perhaps, so we see him, we'll, we'll know more information.
I'm believing.
Uh no, my only thought is, I, I just think we should explore the attitude of the students to see what they would think if we had this. And if they would use, like, like, to me, if I knew that we renovating this would mean that we were solving a problem. And students were now, I mean, take advantage of this, then I would be very excited about it. Um just a, a question that I have, I don't know the answer to the question. Would just be, even if we do this and make it beautiful, because, because we have a question, we can make it beautiful or we can make it sufficient.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I know there's, there's a spectrum, and I would feel excited about making it beautiful if I knew that people are gonna use it and wanna use it, if I knew that we were just gonna have this thing here.
Sure.
Because we need to have it, then I'd say, let's just make it sufficient, so if I, if I knew from students somehow, that like, yeah, this is, this is amazing. We would definitely use it if we had it, and I would be very excited about it.
I'm meeting with our board reps on Monday.
Yeah.
About some of the facilities, concerns they brought up uh last week.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk to them, to see some of their opinions about this.
Cool.
All right, and I.
I'll report back on that.
Yeah.
I have one point of clarification. The, the mention of uh opening it up to community members and opportunities for outside of students is obviously one I get very excited about.
Yeah.
And with that said, what, opening up the track didn't increase, didn't cost anything, we didn't like do anything additional. In order to make it available to the community, so can you just clarify? When you provided examples of like other reasons why it would be good to have multiple showers and this and that. Is if, if we weren't talking about community members and if it was only available to students with the. Size or number of showers or interesting, how to use that space, be different than what you're talking about right now?
Those uses don't typically overlap, so you have community or you have students generally, so I'm not sure that it would necessarily produce.
So would it change your goals, I guess is what I'm asking?
There is a shower, oh, sorry.
Well, I'm just pointing out those, I, at least from my, I'm not an expert here, but even just moving through those. Like those showers, leaving those shower spaces, like to go out to the pool, those are points of egress too, and like, they are not even compliant. Right, one, why, with the one in the boys, I think um X can pull, like, there's at least a six inch. Is that, I don't know, I don't know, but, uh so, so just from a, like a safety perspective, from a. You know, yeah, so regardless of whether they're. Things that are like required anywhere, I mean, kind of the same thing along what Adam's saying, but I think, I'm just curious if. There was anything that you were like, well, community members were here, it would be great if we also did or expanded or.
I can't help but think, so there's a, there's a shower in the, in the, in between both. Between the boys and the girls bathroom, that was built originally in the sixties for the community use.
Hmm.
Okay, you can see it in the green, yeah, um. Do you have a pointer or something?
We.
No pointer, okay, anyways, so um, so I think that, um adding, thank you, oh, yeah. That, that bathroom, um that already exists. Um makes it so that community members don't need to go into our existing boys and girls uh bathrooms. And if ever there was a time where um our boys and girls had to use those spaces. We have an additional existing shower room that was already built from the sixties.
And what's the condition of that one?
Um also, this one is in, is, uh we didn't, we didn't take pictures and we can do that next time.
Yeah.
But this one is in um. Um. He, as were, as bad disrepair or possibly worse um disrepair.
So do, do we need three shower rooms, and if it is just gonna be like on the weekends of like, you know, a Sunday for community? Couldn't they just use the, the boys and the girls rooms, again, I'm just trying to be like efficient, like, this is something that we truly need or it's not? And I, I had a question about the egress, are those actually like exits? Because like, just if something has a door, doesn't mean it's a egress, so I'm curious if it actually is a point of egress, like, if there's like an emergency.
Hmm. The doors between the locker rooms and the pool would not be egressed.
Okay, okay.
That's something, Todd, we can look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another.
Yeah.
It, it's not a great space for storage, it's right off.
Yeah, I, I love, I mean. Why don't we schedule a work for. Yeah.
We will, um, uh we'll be happy, we're gonna get you a pool pass.
I was gonna say, if I were pulling, I wanted to swim.
Yeah.
It's like the grand finale.
We're gonna, we're gonna do a pool pass, we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you a tour.
Yeah.
Uh yeah, let's set that afterwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no.
Yeah, let's do it, that's scary, I'll, I'll tag you off.
Yeah, all right, we'll figure it out.
Be happy to, yeah.
We'll set it up before the next.
So what, what do you do with deep dive in the showers, uh deep dive in the floor, um, any else?
May I kind of restyle some more, but.
All right, um other, other topics?
Uh there was the, the bleachers on this, but I think we kinda, I don't know, someone to keep talking about that. I think we're all probably in agreement on the bleachers at this point.
Yeah. And the number that's on there, like, that's current pricing, you guys were able to get numbers back from uh manufacturers?
Pricing from last year that's been escalated.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Carrie, thanks.
Please move on to consideration of accounts. Tom and.
So.
Yeah, it's. So Bob and the finance team, we uh. Introduce stuff, I know it's tough act to follow in the showers, but uh. Switch gears.
Yeah, I can't stop tours for Doug and school, but pay off, I'll do my best to. Uh sure, uh Dom, we see, um assistant superintendent for finance, business and finance, and get introduced yourselves, we'll, we'll move forward.
And we shite, um assistant. Assistant school business executive, and I work with them. Uh Lori Much, I'm the district manager. And I work with. Lovely people.
Amazing team.
That's right.
Great, so we'll start with the treasurer's report?
Yes, um treasurer's report, um for August, again, um like I stated in July. Uh not really much activity at this point, um we are getting into um with the tax collection and stuff, so we are getting. Um a lot of stuff going on and getting um ready to start investing again um for the following year. August is a bad month, so you'll start seeing the change in September. Yes. With a little bit of standing, so.
Tax payments are coming in?
They start October first, so that's when you're gonna see the big change in the treasurer's report. Um you get a little bit of stated, stated right at the end of September, with the O's lottery aid. So until then, July and August, you're really skating through the summer months.
You've got places to, to park that money as it comes in?
Still working on it right now. Sadly, the interest rates are starting to decline, that's true at this time, I think we're at four and a half, four point six. In our investments, and right now, we're seeing coming in under four. Yeah, yeah, three point six, three point. So still good compared to what it was several years ago, but not quite as nice as we.
Yeah.
Uh enjoyed last year.
And then obviously affects the revenue that we have to be able to pay for things like.
Right.
Theirs, teachership, well.
Showers, that's true, this is true, but again, as Dominic's gonna review in the revenue, um that's why we always. Much a little conservative about the revenue, because those interest rates you can never count on.
Yeah.
So. So.
It's also an opportune time to mention that we are going through a RFP process for financial institutions, and of course. Interest in, interest rate receiving is, is part of that conversation, it's something important. Important aspect of that, and we'll, we'll share more about that as, as, uh as we hit that time.
Anyone in the treasurer's report? Next thing is I think the surplus, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Uh huh.
Um so the surplus is, is quite a lengthy list. And I will admit that there might be a few of these vehicles that we did already um surplus back. Um but um in, in a haste to get this done and get a most complete list to make sure we are right on target with all of our surplusing. Um I would include everything that I had to date on all the vehicles, so you might be resurplusing things that you're, you've already done before, but. Um usually, it's the uh planned role uh exchange of vehicles when they meet their end of life use. For the New York State Department of Transportation and the pupil transportation units. So it's a regular schedule and you trade those, and some of them were the uh. Um a couple of them had to be destroyed, and that was part of that electric bus grant that we um we. Actually had some nice funds come in for the support of those electric vehicles, so um. Actually had some nice funds come in for the support of those electric vehicles, so um actually taking apart a couple of buses wasn't a bad thing. Um so anyways, and then just some instruments, um some old equipment. That was discovered in the maintenance firm that's no longer used, broken, unsafe. Um so just the typical stuff and we usually either dispose of this or send it to auction or in the in the case of the vehicles trade-ins and or auction.
Stan not doing surplus anymore and better.
Awesome.
Well, he he's.
He's still in the towers.
Yeah, right, that's right, yes.
But the buses go to auction, is there?
It depends, um some sometimes they're traded in, sometimes they go to auction, sometimes we can get more from that auction. Um but in the case of the two electrics, we had to comply with what the grants dictated that we do with those. Um old buses.
Did anyone wanna ask about the paint color dispenser?
You can ask, I'm not sure.
Broken and unused, is there anything wrong with it?
Um but they just said it was, yeah, it's it's broken, they don't use it. And I guess it's quite a a large piece of equipment, so it'll free up space. I could keep coming up with reasons.
No, no, I just. Old smoking and I've used, you know, what else is wrong with it? Any questions on surplus?
What else?
Hey, um moving on. Anything else? Revenue presentation?
Yeah, it's something really short, I I thought we would just have a quick conversation about revenue at a ten thousand foot level, uh we're we're not quite at budget season yet, but getting there. And I thought maybe we'd we'd start with this presentation just to set a standard. Primarily so that we'll, you know, we're all using the same language, well, the general understanding of the the terminology that's used as we begin talking about those. Uh both revenue and expenditures and so on, so really, this is just a very brief uh overview, and again, we'll be diving much deeper into this as as we. Head towards that particular scene, so just real quick, um let's talk a little about revenue distribution, oops, I have the. I I I have to go over happy using the last whole time.
It's still on.
It's still stuck.
Can you use that?
And it turns. Jay, can you quick on your presentation?
Yeah, my computer does this.
There we go, right, we just had to be patient.
Go too far?
No, no, that's perfect, that's great. It it looks like a long agenda, but I'm just very very quickly, we're just gonna kind of go over the revenue distribution and how how that looks uh for ICSD, state aid, other revenue and so on. So we'll uh we'll start real quickly with the revenue distribution, I thought I thought this might be interesting for folks to see. Uh we're all familiar with that pie graph, uh I think we talked about this quite a bit, about the local tax share being largest uh portion of our revenue. Here in Ithaca, almost sixty eight percent of our revenue comes from our local taxpayers and local tax share with twenty eight percent coming from state aid. What I wanted to share this time over on the right is a comparison of our local districts, so you can kind of see. What their distribution looks like, it's actually quite different than ours, other than Lansing. Wanted to make folks aware of that, Newfield is an estimate, but it's probably fairly close. So in terms of state aid, you can see the distribution. Quite disparate, look at our our partners. Also, state aid, again, just to kind of look at how state aid compares from year to year, we typically will see anywhere from two to four percent increase. From year in the different state aid pots, um though the largest calculation there is our 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 foundation aid. And this just talks about the way that that's calculated and how the state sees that, it is a very complicated uh. calculation, for the most part, it's predicated upon our uh combined wealth ratio. Uh so again, about twenty percent of our our revenue comes from that, and you can see from year to year. Uh twenty two million and twenty five to about twenty five million for the current year. There's some other areas there in state aid too, just some other funding we received, building aid is something we talked about, just had a conversation about previously. How that helps fund some of our. The work that we do in our buildings, and just so folks are clear, when we receive aid in certain categories here, particularly building aid, we get about fifty four percent of that back from those. Those expenditures, once the project is complete, so that can be a long period of time before we actually see that revenue. Uh both state aid, pretty much the same thing, but that's year to year, again, we get about fifty four percent of that back uh and so on. We have per the one difference, here is our software library and textbook aid, that's a per pupil allocation we receive, and that we actually receive. A hundred percent back uh for up to a certain amount, so on a per pupil basis. So forward. So there we go. There's the breakdown, again, that's what I just explained in those different areas, is the posse's building, transportation and so on. And miscellaneous uh income. So uh payment move taxes, I'll turn this over downwind, this is her area of expertise.
Actually, they just came in uh last week and we're working on the billing right now, a little bit later than normal, we usually wait for information from the county to make sure that uh all of our billing is is correct. Um but we have two different types of pilots, we have the pilots that are actually set up, um and and it's a certain percentage of what their assessed value is. Um that we bill out, and then we have other pilots that come in later that are income or expense driven. Um some of the pilots are based on income and expense and also shared with uh the city. And the county, and it depends on the tax rate, so those we are kind of unknowns, we still estimate until those figures come in, it's usually not till January. Um but today, we um finished our billing and we're about one point three million on the actual billed pilots. Um I think there's maybe one that's ending this year, and that's eighteen of them that we're billing out today, um and then the other. Uh just shy of a million dollars will come in sometime in January, we'll be billing those out as well. And I think that is about another eight to ten pilots that are out there and those different types of pilots that we have to wait for the information to come in.
Some can, do you have to process all those, I mean, those are all, so I always thought that they they just would reflect the assessed value property each year in in line with the pilot, they saying that's not how it works?
So actually, we actually build them, that's why they're separate from, yeah, so that's why we have in our revenue, we have a separate pilot lines. It's not part of the tax um the tax levy, it's a separate line. And then every year we get figures from the county, we compare, we keep we keep actual data for each pilot as it goes through an estimates, what they're gonna be as we go forward. Which helps us with our revenue projections. And then every year we actually bill, we send an invoice to those pilots, usually it is around first when the tax bills go out. Again, uh we are late getting the information from the county this year, which is, we'll still give them thirty days that.
So the IDA gives you all this paperwork, is it?
Tomcats County.
Tomcats County, so the IDA approves the pilot and then it goes to the county and then.
Yes, yeah, or the city, but most of the.
Chain link office in the city and.
Yeah, and it's the co- the Tomcats County Finance Office, it has all the information, yeah. And so then we actually build and regenerate a a an invoice from the district that we send to all these um.
So they don't get the usual pink slip?
They get, no, they do not get tax bill.
Aren't you normally? Are you that? No. I'm sorry, seems like a hassle.
Well.
You gotta 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 you gotta expect the money, all right, you don't send the bill, you don't get the money, all right?
Any other questions on the pilots?
Great, oh, just some other areas there too, we received some interest and penalty on taxes, kind of gives you an idea of what that is. We also receive a tuition offset from Cornell, and I know that we're in discussions with Cornell about that particular figure, and my understanding is we we may see a slight increase uh. Next year, I believe, but it'd be the current year, I'll have to double check. There's some other fees, this like is using the charges, interest earnings, you know, we anticipated about nine hundred thousand dollars this current year. But with interest rates dropping, that may change uh in subsequent years, I guess we'll we'll wait and see what what that looks like. And then again, just some other miscellaneous revenue, which you may not see it as, oh, you can't see it, our Medicaid reimbursement. We also receive some some income from that as well. Thank you very much, miscellaneous, it's our BOSI refund, thank you.
Miscellaneous is BOSI.
And includes BOSIs, yeah, primarily, that's what it is.
That's just we overpaid and that they ended up, they figure out that our bill is less than.
They bill us in May and we pay them, and then all of a sudden they figure out that they won't build this and they give us a refund back and then we file from there.
I I'm assuming that when you guys are doing the budgeting with the uh inverb taxes. And we're we're forecasting that each year is like going up ten percent per property that's in the program, right, so like we're factoring that into the budget.
Yeah, that's why we keep all that data.
Yeah.
And we keep real spreadsheets on each pilot that's out there. We base it on the current tax rate though, because we don't know what the tax rate's gonna be.
Right, right.
This is really just a series of definitions, we get, excuse me, questions quite a bit about tax levy and tax rate. Often those can be confused, so we put this up here, and again, it's something we're just mentioning and talking about often uh during the budget process. But again, tax levy is just the the whole amount that we raise, and that figure there is the the current uh levy. That we're we're receiving as part of our revenue this year, and it's this is just the calculation how that that we uh tax rate is actually devised. But again, we'll 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 be diving into this in in greater details. Uh another conversation then, one that happens about our reserves, and again, we talked about reserves and fund balance quite a bit, um there. The definition of each of these is is really important to understand, our fund balance uh right now, so. Let me step back a little bit, are there are three types of fund balance to talk about, our our assigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance and our reserves. And so our fund balance, let's go to our. Unassigned fund balance. Our unassigned fund balance really is the uh funds that we're able to allocate for emergencies, for emergency, for rainy day, New York State says that we can. Set aside four percent of our total uh budget for the current year as that unassigned fund balance. Our assigned fund balance is funds that we have or excess funds that we have left over. From year to year that we can then appropriate to the current year's budget to offset some burden on the taxpayer. The last portion of this are our reserves, and our reserves are set aside for very specific purposes, for example, capital projects, our. Our retirement uh reserve, our healthcare reserve and so on. And so on the last page, just give me a sense of where we are with those, this is gonna stall me every time. Yep.
There you go.
There we go, and it gets exciting and yeah, this gives you a sense of where we are with those are with our fund balance and reserves, so our restricted. Fund balance, which is another way of uh saying our reserves, restricted reserves can only be used for for those particular reasons that are set aside for the those. So for example, like I mentioned, the capital reserve, retirement contribution and so on, uh can only be used for those intended purposes, so right now. We have about twenty one point two million dollars set aside in those reserves. Our assigned fund balance, again, those funds that we roll over for your year to take the burden off of the taxpayer by that amount. Uh about eight point five million dollars, those are designated for for those specific uses in our particular, in our in our budget. And our unassigned fund balance is about six point five million. And again, that's that's about three point eight five percent of our total bound, the total uh budget, so just shy of four percent that New York State allows. So that's where we are currently, and again, a very basic overview. It says, thank you, I need to tell that. I used to have a whole British sports car that ran just like this thing runs, it doesn't let go, this one starts.
Flip this tax in the computer, it's.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
So other, I have a couple of questions, but I'll yield to my colleagues, so.
We have six point five million in the unassigned because that is four percent of the budget. Yeah, it's a shy of sixty, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my question, right?
And that helps with our credit rating?
It does, our fund balance as a whole, that's, yeah. All right. Yeah, something I should, thank you for reminding, kind of did a deep dive in fund balance reserves, wanted to look at across New York State, what was the average? Fund balance that districts have by percentage of their total budget, it's actually twenty two percent. And we are exactly at twenty two percent of our budgets.
I wanted to ask uh. You and I over the summer, early this year, I've had some conversations about this, but but not not at the board, so maybe just want to remove some of the conversations. We've had preparation for meeting two, the meetings, put them on the record, uh we are in discussion with a bargaining unit uh. Uh they uh at the end of last year, we were able to offer, I think we were to offer, what, I should say, about the middle of last year. Roughly twenty percent increase in payroll over four years. We're now able to offer. Twenty one percent over three years roughly. Why is that?
Yeah, great question, yeah, one of things that was very helpful recently, we went through the audit, a financial audit, and. That that gives us a much more solid sense of where we are financially. Uh in particularly, it relates to fund balance, wanted to look at um how stable was that going to be from year to year, again, I looked at, when I came out, I looked at. The understanding that we had a failed budget one year, we had essentially a rollover budget the following year, so it was was. Advantageous to look at the audit, to look at, look to see uh what were some of the factors in terms of that financial stability. Particularly as it goes to our fund balance, so. Looking at the negotiations, what it would look like from a projection standpoint from now to the next three to four years. Funding this proposal was practical. So um we're also looking at an RFP regarding our demographics, right, and that's becoming a very important conversation in terms of. Uh our financial stability, where we might be in three to five years, um we're preliminary reports are suggesting that um. Our will be reducing the number of students. Uh and and these are preliminary numbers, but we're looking at a relatively significant drop in the number of students over the next ten years. And again, preliminary report, I don't wanna uh get too far ahead of that, but uh when you look at all of those factors, consider what. Uh where we are, we are comfortable financially, financially in a good spot. Um and we try to project that out, that's why we were able to propose that, at least at this point. And that is a slightly different posi- position than where we were uh last year, in particular, last year, I think we were having conversations, first of all, the federal aid. And that was in question at that point, um. And uh our own stability was something that we wanted to be uh much more solid in terms of our understanding.
So just to paraphrase, one difference between where we stand today versus where we were back in January, February, is we now have audited. Numbers and we know what our exact fund balances.
Right.
For the prior year and the numbers look a little better than. They might have potentially been a few months ago.
That's right.
So that's A. And then B, you know, just, you know, RFP is stands for.
Request for proposal, right?
So it's actually not the request, but the response is the request, that we always say RFP, but it actually wasn't the request for proposal, but basically. The the response to that, I just want to be clear, people watching at home, uh we made a request for proposals, we received three proposals, we. Uh awarded the proposal to Cornell University uh demography.
Correct.
And they have now come in several times with preliminary numbers on student enrollment, and that suggests that we're gonna have. Fewer.
Correct.
Students. And costs less to educate fewer students than more students, so those two things, the healthy. Fund balance and the preliminary demographic information at Cornell University. Put us in a better spot today than we might have been.
Correct.
And then correspondingly, we can then. Offer more to bargaining.
That's right.
Can you, can you comment on the number of, talking about a drop in students and setting it over ten years, can you? Uh comment at all on the number of students that would need to reduce in a district like this who actually. I mean, I'm thinking about the number of students that it would need to go down to even reduce by one teacher. Like if we're really talking about, say, that's, we're talking about a demographic change, but can you translate that a little bit into what that would actually mean from your turn?
That'd probably be a little bit out of scope, and I only say that because of that, at what point do we decide that X number of students means that. We need this many buildings to help educate students, so probably a little out of scope in this conversation, but uh. You're going to drop potentially a thousand students over ten years, that's a different conversation. About where do we educate, how many buildings does it take and so on and so forth. And there's other implications that yield costs.
And you have done the um the projections and that, but you say it's out of the scope, but we also are.
Sure.
Accounting that majorly for feeling like comfortable and and the financial position that we are in, so can you talk about what the. Projection work is that you have done?
Sure, again, it's a question of can we fund it now, what does stability look like during the term of the contract, so we're talking. And again, I don't wanna have it too deep into the conversations regarding the contract, so funding it. Very practical, considering where we are right now. Sustainability is the question, I think that's one of the reasons why it was questioned about how long the contract should term. In any of our conversations about negotiations and where are we in terms of stability during that period of time? So if we're talking about two or three years, we can fund that. Beyond that, I think the information that we're receiving from the study is gonna help us understand what we built from that point forward. So.
So they are a little separate, that's not, so we, you would actually say then that the um. That the response to the RFP and the information that we got about that, about long-term projections actually has. Very little to do with how we are assessing whether we can enter into a three-year contract.
I think I've said before that what we do is as much an art as it is a science, right, so. We're certainly taking that into account and wanna learn more about that and we do have some understanding of what it costs to maintain a building. In terms of anything from energy to stepping. Um so that's certainly back our minds, we're thinking through this, but again, right now, the conversation is can we fund the term of the contract? Knowing what we know now and the answer is yes, so projecting beyond that, that's much more hard than science.
Great, I I think one thing I I might share, you know, for colleagues who weren't in the meeting. Uh you know, we've had this discussions, interim check-ins with Cornell. And as, sorry if I'm stating this, but as forecasts come in for the number of students at. Various points in the future, we can provide that information to Tetra Tech and say, okay, we had this many students in this year and then. You know, two years later, this many students and this many students, we're looking at the current inventory of buildings and and the state of various states of repair. What are the things that we could do to sort of most efficiently educate that number of students and. I don't think there's any answer to that yet, but the the work is under underway to to provide those answers and a little bit, I think what we're. I don't think it's a stretch to say that, you know, for a thousand students, fewer ten years out. That's gonna mean some savings and the work Tetra Tech is trying to create, you know, what's the best way to achieve those savings, you know, the highest quality. Physical plant for the students. Not, there's not there yet, but it seems like pretty good forecast. Questions? Uh, anything else?
I have a more, and I will request questions if there's something.
We're we're at the end, so there's future items for future meetings?
Um. During the budget process last year, one of the things that came up. Uh frequently across the community was feeling like they didn't understand where the money was going. Um especially when it was really uh down at the board grandeur kind of school level. Um because we are not quite in bus- budget season yet, I am hopeful that there might be an opportunity uh. During these committee meetings to be able to get to deep dive a little bit deeper into that, to really understand. Um what the district's uh educational goals are for the year. Um how that translates into allocations for educational programming and members of staff and types of staff. And then how that translates even further, I even am a little unclear at this point about. Um how much of that decision-making is made at the kind of district level as far as. Um educational programs that are happening in any individual school versus um how much of that is left up to um. To building leaders.
Sure.
Um I know that in other districts, it can be quite significant and you can see dramatic differences in the student outcomes based on. The kind of priorities that an individual school leader has set, um so even just understand how much of the, understanding how much autonomy. Um school leaders have uh with that budgeting versus um at the exact team level. Um and to just be able to break it down, it's as closely as possible to understand how the roles are translating into the allocations that are translating. Then into the program and.
Sure.
It's happening at each level.
Probably something for a combined curriculum, I think that's me, but absolutely.
That'd be great.
We can. Happy to do it. I'm great friends.
Me too.
Yes, so action items, sign, Todd, you're gonna come back just with the shower report?
Yeah.
And full report, um let's run the waters.
I like your comment.
I think Emily has a has a a a item for future agenda, so then we're at item uh nine, adjournment. So I'm gonna close the meeting. Thank you everyone.
Thanks, thank you.